I'm going to call the November 10th, 2020 meeting of the Easton Meadow Planning Board to order. So I need to ask by Master Allah if there's anyone who might be recording their name. And if so, would you please wave your hand on Zoom so someone can recognize you and bring you into the meeting and you can state your name? Hearing na- hearing none, those in the board members in attendance this evening are Tyde Richards, Peter Punderson, Jonathan Torscha, George Kingston, myself, Russell Denver. We are joined by Bethany Yao, the Director of Planning and Community Development, and Rebecca Jones from the Office of Planning and Economic Development. So the first item of business are the approval of the October 20th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review them. There any corrections or additions that anyone might have? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept?
Some move, George.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do we motion made and seconded to approve the meeting minutes of October 20th, 2020? All in favor by roll call. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well, so that passes. Do I hear a motion to go out of order by taking item number three before item number two?
Don't move.
Do I have a second? Okay, by roll call, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Port- Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am a yes. So, Mr. Clark, would you please read item three?
How about the site plan waiver first?
Oh, excuse me. Correct. So let's do site plan waiver first.
Yep. SR- SPRW 2020-40, Home Office, Request for Site Plan Review Waiver for a Home Office for a life coaching business at 30 High Street, Assessors Parcel ID 28-42-A and .32 plus or minus acre site in the residential C zoning district. The applicant is Alyn McDermott, 30 High Street, Easton Meadow, Mass.
So is the petitioner available?
I don't see that name up here. Is it anyone else, Bethany, maybe? It would be Alyn McDermott. I don't know if she's coming into the Zoom call under a different name.
So if you are the petitioner or associated with the petitioner, there's the ability to raise your hand on Zoom. You go to the bottom of the page and click on the wave sign. Still no one? All right, so let's I don't think we need a motion just to carry this over to the next meeting. Do we, George?
We don't need a motion, I don't think. We can leave. If they show up later, we can deal with it.
Okay, great. Item three.
Okay, case SP 2020-5, My Main Squeezed Juice Bar, Request by Applicant for a Special Permit for a Restaurant at 165 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 18-13-C on .39 plus or minus acre in existing structure located industrial zoning district. The applicant is Cassia. Could someone help me with that first name?
Cassandra.
That's the last name.
No, Sarah Swello is the last name.
Okay, L C care of Cassandra Curcello, 15 Melwood Avenue, Easton Meadow, Mass. Sorry about that.
So Cassie, are you on the call? Hi, we can hear you. We can't see you.
Okay, gonna fix it right now.
Okay.
Thanks. Yes, okay.
There you go. How are you?
Good, how are you?
But. So why don't you tell us what your plans are, where you're currently located, where you're wishing to move, what changes you are hoping to make to the building, changes to the business, and then we'll go from there.
Okay, so we're currently at 48 Shaker Road, and we've been here for actually six years this month. And we're hoping to move to 165 Shaker Road, so a little ways down the street. Right now, we're only in 1,000 square feet, and so moving to the new space will give us a little over 2,000 square feet, so effectively doubling our area, which would help us because we're trying to increase our menu, and it would give us a larger kitchen area, because we get like a lot of catering, we do a lot of farmers markets and other kinds of events, and we're kind of outgrowing our current space.
Now, what would you anticipate for your hours of operation?
Right now, we're open eight to three, and I foresee that continuing. We're potentially extending to eight to four because the new location is directly abutting the ICRAP. And on Saturdays, probably from eight to three as well, but closed on Sundays.
Okay, and currently you have how many employees and how many employees would you anticipate after the move?
Right now, I have four, and with the move, probably six.
Okay, and the building is currently used as?
Right now, it's empty because it was a daycare, and it's actually in the process of being sold. So my dad is purchasing the building. He will just be the purchaser. He has no ownership in the juice bar, and I will have no ownership in the building. I will just be a tenant.
Okay, so before we open it to the public, does any members of the planning board have any questions of the petitioner?
What are the new items that you're going to be adding to your menu?
Our hope is to add avocado toast and grain bowls, which are like salad, but more like rice or quinoa based, so in line with our current healthy offerings, a little more substantial.
Will you have additional seating as well?
Yes, we don't have any seating in our current location, so our intent is to add 12.
12?
12 seats.
Okay, okay, good. So if there are no other questions from the board, I will open the hearing to anyone who is out there on Zoom and wishes to be heard, would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting, into the public hearing? Do we have any hands up?
Nope, we don't.
Okay. So hearing that there are no individuals wishing to speak on this matter, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Some move, George.
And do I have a second? Okay, motion made in second to close the public hearing by roll call. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am an a as well, so that passes. So other questions that the board might have, or Bethany, do you wish to discuss any issues that the Planning Department might have with this request?
There was originally a tax affidavit issue, but that's since been cleared up as of Monday morning, I believe, so that should be good to go.
And the site plan, there's sufficient parking for the location and the requested use?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any questions of the board? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the special permit?
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
So a motion been made in second to approve the special permit for the property at 165 Shaker Road for My Main Squeezed Juice Bar by roll call. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torscha?
Yes.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
And I am a yes as well. Congratulations and best of luck on the move.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Bye bye. Mr. Richards, the next item, please.
Case SP 2020-4 Barrera Inc., DBA Tortillo Mexican Restaurant, Request by Applicant for a Special Permit for a Restaurant at 621 North Main Street, Assessors Parcel ID 1A-54-85 on .54 plus or minus acre site in existing structure located in the Business Zoning District. The applicant is Barrera Inc., DBA Tortillo Mexican Restaurant, 35 Nottingham Road, Grafton, Mass.
So I'm going to ask that if there is anyone here representing the petitioner, so if there's multiple parties who might want to be heard on, you could bring them in all at the same time if possible? From the petitioner. So we have a, I believe it's Jeffrey Oppenheimer and a Ramon Michael. We, you are muted. Oh, okay. We have Ramon Michael. Hello?
Ramon Michael and Ramon Jr.
Okay, great. And Mr. Oppenheimer, we cannot see you. Oh, there you go. Okay. Hello?
Good evening.
So why don't you start us off?
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, I'm Jeff Oppenheim. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth, Massachusetts. Greetings from Cape Cod. And I've had the privilege of representing a few of these shareholders for several years. They have multiple restaurants, and when they decided to open a restaurant in Falmouth, they retained our firm, and I've represented them for the last five years. And in that period of time, they've opened six restaurants. They'd very like, very much like to open their next restaurant in the town of East Long Meadow. And I'd just like to make some quick introductions for the benefit of the board. You've already met Ramon Michel and his son, Ramon Michel Jr. And the other principals are Miguel Ramos, who is the president of Barrera Inc., and his wife is also very involved in the business, and his brother Jorge Ramos, who is unable to be part of this this evening because they just opened a restaurant in Ulster, New York last Friday, so he's very busy with that.
Whereabouts in New York?
Excuse me?
Would you say in New York?
Ulster.
Ulster, okay.
Yeah. We, our project architect was Phil Burdick from Springfield, Mass. The owners of the property are Georgette Emanuel Coelho, and they lasted business at the location under the name of Forgera. They were, it was a Brazilian grill. Their counsel, my colleague out in Springfield area is a gentleman by the name of Dan Kelly. I don't think they're on this evening, but they are obviously staying very involved. We also work with Brendan Greeley, who's a commercial real estate broker in your part of the state. Some background, Miguel and his wife Elena have an interest in 11 restaurants, Mr. Chairman. They stretch from Ulster in New York to Poughkeepsie, to Red Hook, to Wapinjer Falls, and Hampton, Connecticut, and then into Massachusetts, Grafton, Northborough, my town of Falmouth, Saugus on the North Shore, Brockton and Brockton, and hopefully in the near future to your community, East Long Meadow. They've worked in the restaurant business since 1995. Their brother Jorge is the business partner, and as I told you, he is working in New York this evening. He has been 16 years in the business. Their partners, Ramon and Ramon Jr., who are on the Zoom this evening. Ramon has 40 years in the restaurant business, and his son, who's following in his footsteps, has seven years. So collectively, these families have 88 years of experience in the restaurant business, and they're eminently qualified, in my opinion, and I hope yours, to run a Mexican restaurant in your community. Ramon owns two restaurants in Rhode Island, one in Warwick and one in Wakefield. And previously, he had a chain of Mexican restaurants in Indiana, which he sold in 2012. So these folks are extremely hardworking. They're very entrepreneurial, positive people, maybe even courageous to be doing what you're doing during this pandemic, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And I really applaud their spirit and their willingness, given the economic climate. Some history about this project in particular, which I think is relevant. A little over a year ago, October of last year, we entered into a purchase and sales agreement with the Coelos. We were going to buy the real estate and the assets of their, of their restaurant. And it was all contingent on obtaining a liquor license from Town Council. We went to Town Council, we had a couple meetings with them, and on February 25th, we obtained approval of our liquor license, subject to approval of the Planning Board to the special permit that's before you this evening. So we were in the process of applying last March when the pandemic hit, and that threw everything into helter-skelter, and the whole deal was restructured in the ensuing months. It went from a purchase of the real estate to a 10-year lease with an option to purchase. Some of the business partners that had originally been involved could no longer be involved because of the pandemic. That's when Mr. Michel and his son agreed to participate. So based on that, we will be going back to the Town Council if we have a favorable decision to, you know, reframe our liquor license application. And Ramon Michel Jr. is slated to be the manager of our new operation. So a little bit of information on the actual property. It is in your business district. The restaurant is just under 10,000 square feet. The seating capacity is 264. There are 88 parking spaces being shown on our site plan. The main floor is just over 5,600 square feet. There's a lower banquet room that's about 4,300 square feet, round numbers, and the first floor is approved for 142 occupants and the lower level for 90 occupants. Outdoor patio, if approved by the board, we're seeking 32 seats for dining and the service of alcoholic beverages. We have one bar, or we will have one bar on the main floor. There is a bar in the banquet area, and there are two public entrances on the main floor and five exits from, from the main floor. We're going to renovate the interior, including the kitchen. It's going to be transformed into a colorful Mexican restaurant that's consistent with the decor of the other restaurants that these gentlemen are involved in. We are applying under your special permit provisions, which we have listed in our application, basically, I probably was maybe a little overbroad because of my lack of familiarity with your bylaws, but I put down 7.26, which is the modification amendment for special permit, 3.077, which is the use regulations for a restaurant, and 3.4, which is to change to an existing structure or use, and probably most importantly, 3.52, which is the pre-existing non-conforming bylaw, which the standard, as you well know, is that we're not, be not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformities. I'd like now, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to show a couple photographs to go over the plot, the site plan and the floor plans.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you. First, just a couple of photos to show. They're not terribly good. I was the photographer, but this gives you a little bit of an idea of what the decks are like. They're on, they're on two levels, and they're off of one of the dining rooms. Maybe we could show the other photo as well. That gives you an idea. You can see the door in the center of this photo. There's a little bit of a canopy area.
Excuse me, Jeffrey, if you just click the green underneath, it says share screen, just click that green arrow.
Sorry. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. We probably were not able to see the first photo, right? So I'll go back. There you go. That's, that's another angle of the same, of the same decks. Apologize for that. Why don't we next go to the site plan? So this is the site plan. You see on the right-hand side, North Main Street, which is obviously your main street going through East Long Meadow. It's bounded on the west by Granby Street and on Barnum Street on the north. The restaurant has been existence for a long time. The parking layout, we don't have any plans of changing. You see two handicap spots on the north, excuse me, on the southeast corner of the property. Bethany has mentioned to me that the Planning Board would like to see another two spots. We're happy to provide two more additional handicap spots. Probably they would be adjacent to the two that we're showing on the plan because that's where our handicap ramp starts and leads into the building. And we would have our engineer, architect place those two spots proximate to the handicap ramp. May involve a little bit of the redrawing of some of those lines. But if you otherwise find this application, you know, you're going to approve it, you can certainly, we're happy if you can condition it for two additional spots. Now, on the site plan, you can see at the rear of the building, there is the deck. We're going to put our arrow right on that. And off of that deck, you'll see a very small set of staircases, set of stairs, which are not in existence yet, but would be part of what we would add to the deck so that there is an additional egress from the deck. Other than that, we are not changing the building footprint or adding anything to the exterior, other than what we are showing with the staircase. And frankly, we're doing the staircase because we think that's probably what the fire department would want. Okay, so now if we
So just hold on one second. So I just want to ask the board, before you move off of the site plan, do any members of the board have questions about the site plan?
Mike, I have a question. If you're looking at making two more handicap spots south of the ramp, you're going to lose a parking space because they're wider than the regular parking space. So my question is, if you lose that one parking space, do you still have the correct ratio of parking spaces to seats?
Going to have to pick up one somewhere else on the site.
Right.
And, and I think that our engineer will be able to find an additional one. I'm going to rely on him to do that. I couldn't tell you offhand exactly where that is. We didn't have, we just received the board's concern about two additional handicap spots yesterday, and I haven't been able to, you know, get an answer yet from Phil Burdick.
Okay.
Obviously, we would need to be doing some, some adjusting.
I just wanted to bring it to the foreground of the discussion that another parking space will be required.
I might add, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
The extra spaces are not just a request from the Planning Board. They are required under 521 CMR, which is the, the Architectural Access Board Regulations and also ADA. So this is a requirement. It's not a, an option, really.
Point, point's well taken, Mr. Kingston.
I have a question. There's three properties along Burnham Street, and you have parking that looks like it's on those properties. Can you explain that to me?
Our landlord owns two of those properties, which are designated, you know, off of, they front off of Barnum. And historically, the parking has been as is being presented on this plan, with perhaps the exception of the handicap spots. I'm not, I'm not certain that they exist there now. So the, our landlord controls, controls those properties, obviously, and so he has permitted, well, he has structured the lease to us to allow for the parking that you see on this plan.
Okay, you said your landlord owns two of the three. What about the third property?
The third property is owned by Daniel. I think it's, I can't quite read that.
Burek.
Yeah.
Burek.
But we're, we're not parking on his property.
Okay.
Um, I'm looking at along Burnham Street. I see an existing house. I see the Burek property, and I see the one in the middle. And it looks like you've got parking in all three of those parcels.
My understanding is that he bought the parcel between the restaurant and Mr. Burke's business for the purpose of creating additional parking. And as far as I'm aware, the parking on, you know, that's sort of right behind the structure owned by Mr. Burke is on the property owned by Mr. Coelos.
Okay, but your landlord is, is, I mean, does your lease specifically identify every single parking spot on this plan as area that you are leasing?
Going to our lease, Mr. Richards. Just give me one moment. The lease description is the demise premises is approximately 11,747 square feet of gross area, including restaurant banquet facility. area, including restaurant banquet facility, outdoor decks and residences located at 62, 621 North Main Street, East Long Meadow, Massachusetts, and parking spaces associated with the use of the restaurant. The parking lot is located at 617 North Main Street, portion of 20 Barnum Street and a portion of 30 Barnum Street, East Long Meadow. As per the parking plan attached here too, and incorporated by references Exhibit A, showing 88 parking spaces. This lease was a exhibit to our special permit application and should be in your file.
Yep. So where you threw me off is where I thought you said, if I'm correct, that your landlord owns two of the three parcels. So I wanted to make sure you had the right to park in all three parcels because your plan shows that that's your intention.
Yes, we, yes, the landlord, when, when I was talking about two of the three parcels, just to be clear, I was talking about those parcels that front on Barnum Street that are on our plan.
Okay, so everything on this plan that we're looking at is all owned by one entity, the same entity, and that's, and that's your landlord?
Except for the parcel that's designated for Mr. Burdick.
Urac.
Urac. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay. So everything that you see on this plan, except for the southeast corner, is owned by our landlord.
And your right to park on the part parcel that's not owned by your landlord is, how, how does that happen?
The parking is on property not owned by the landlord. I think he's-
Am I, am I missing something here?
I think I see three parking spots, maybe four or five, right on the border of Urac's property. That what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah.
That lot is owned by the Coellos.
Todd, I think you're looking at the parking spaces on Danny's property. There's, or there, there are or were offices in that building and those five spots are associated with his building and his, his use.
As far as I'm aware, all of the parking for that lot is on the lot and accessed off of Barnum Street or North Main Street, but not through our property or the property that we're leasing.
Other questions about the site plan? Before we move off of that? Todd, you still have another question?
No, I, I think I'm okay for now.
Okay. All right, please proceed.
Thank you. We're going to put up the interior plan just to give you some sense of that. On the left is the lower level floor plan. It shows the banquet area, a, you know, storage areas and a, and a secondary kitchen down there and a, and a bar. The floor plan to the right is the first floor plan, which is most relevant because at the top of that plan, you see eight tables on the decks with four chairs at each table, which is, you know, our specific special permit request. You also have maybe a little bit better idea of the steps that come off that deck. And as you can see from the photos, the deck is actually at two levels, an upper area for the, for the four to the right and a lower area with four tables as well.
So if I could, if I could interrupt, so I think this might be an appropriate time. So in February of 2018, Mr. Coelho and his wife entered into a legal agreement with the town, which indicated that the exterior decks would not be used to, for seating capacity. And they'd only be used for restaurant patrons if they wished to smoke. I don't know if he disclosed that with you or not, but that was, he was the owner of the property back then. He's still the owner of the property. I, I don't know if you resolved that issue or is if the, the request to put seating on the deck is part of your special permit seating capacity?
That's your first question, Mr. Denver. All I know about the deck is what is public record, which is the special permit that was issued by the board in 2018. I have not been privy to any private agreements or, or even if it's considered a public agreement but not recorded. So that is obviously a little distressing to me at this point, over a year into this process. We, especially now as a result of the pandemic. In my humble opinion, any restaurant that is unable to have outdoor seating and dining is really putting themselves in a very compromised position. And I guess I would say to you and the board, with all sincerity, if this aspect, which is really the only thing we're requesting, we're not requesting anything additional than to be allowed to serve people on those decks. If that is denied, then I think there is probably a very excellent chance that my clients will not proceed. But I mean, in the end, that's their decision.
Yeah. But so be rest assured that the planning board did, did go along with the town council and we expanded outdoor dining at least through the remainder of the pandemic as requested by, by Governor Baker. So we are not tone deaf to the needs of the restaurant industry in East Long Meadow. But I just thought I'd raise that and just, you know, I wanted to make sure-
Appreciate that.
I wanted to make sure you knew about that agreement. It was dated February of 2018 and it was meant to resolve a number of outstanding suits between the Coellos and the town of East Long Meadow. And I think at the time, Mr. Richards, myself and Mr. Kingston were members of the board at the time, but, but okay.
I would appreciate receiving a copy of that agreement since I have not been given that by our landlord.
Yeah. And, and quite honestly, and, and please forgive my memory, but it was yesterday that I was going through all the meeting materials and I said to myself, wait a minute. I was a fairly new board member and I remember sitting through that session with the town attorney. So it's the one I kind of asked Bethany to look it up and she's new as well. So we've had some turnover here. But Bethany, if you could get that to the attorney, that would be greatly appreciated.
Yep, I'm sending it over right now.
So excuse me for interrupting. So are there any other questions before the floor plan, before we move on?
I, I just want to make a comment on the, on the outdoor seating. It's the, the information you're looking for is towards the end of the document and it's, it's fairly emphatically stated that there will absolutely be no outdoor dining. Understanding completely that what's going on with the pandemic does require outdoor seating. There's no doubt about it, but if, I don't know how to, how to resolve it. I think it has to go through the town council, doesn't it? I'm asking the chairman.
Well, I'm going to ask George to weigh in on that simply because I think he's been on the board the longest and may have, have more history on this specific project or this specific site. So I'm going to punt to you, George, if you can give some history on it.
Okay, yeah, I just had it unmute. Yeah, as you know, Mr. Chairman, there's been a long history with this site. It's been a dining and nightclub and a whole bunch of other things over the years. And the, I won't get into the history too much, except that one of the reasons that they did not want to do, the town did not want to have outdoor dining on those decks is because they do abut and are visible to and can be heard from by residential neighbors on the streets around them. And in the past, noise levels from that location have been a source of trouble to the town. And that was why they did not want to have service out there because they then would end up having speakers out there or a band or something and the neighbors would not be happy with it. Anyway, the, the legal agreement was entered into because of a number of things that happened over the years that shouldn't have happened on a couple of sides. And that was to resolve it and to allow the decks to remain as opposed to requiring them to be removed at that time. And I think the concerns about noise are still there, no matter who the tenant is. And it's something that, that we need to be aware of.
Okay. All right. Can, can we continue, please?
Mr. Denver, if I might add to what was just said by the board members. So in my, in our community, my clients own a restaurant that has two concrete patios, one off each side of the building. Each patio probably can seat close to 30 people each. And, you know, they're in a business district, but behind them there is a mixed-use development with professional and office space in the ground floor and residential space on the second floor. And I am unaware of any complaint by the neighbors. And we have periodically, especially when the weather is nice, a Marachi band, which is not amplified, that, you know, circulates from table to table, three or four gentlemen and plays, they play Mexican music. So, I mean, that's in support of the responsible way in which they conduct their business. You know, they have an option to buy this building. They wish that, you know, but for the pandemic, they would have been buying the building. And, you know, it's just, I would hope that the town council, and I guess to the extent the planning boards involved, are open to the possibility that with a new tenant and hopefully a new ownership down the line, that they would revisit this issue. Anyway, I will continue with the floor plan.
Thank you.
There's not much more to say other than there is a second floor, which has an apartment and an office, which, you know, is, the apartment is not necessarily associated with the restaurant. What do I mean by that? It's, you know, it would be rented possibly to someone who is not involved in the restaurant. The office may very well be used by the restaurant for part of their management activities. So really, that's all on the floor plan, unless, I guess I could point out to you that there is presently two bars on the ground floor and you'll see an area where there's the dish room to the, up above ground floor. They're removing a bar and, and putting a wall up and adding a, a dish room. That's right. Okay?
Yep.
That's that area there. Right now, there's a bar there. The other thing they're doing is behind the existing bar, which is open to the dining room behind the bar, they're going to be putting up a solid wall so the kitchen is, you know, not visible from the dining area. Other than that, it really knows, I mean, even those changes are not really considered structural, but for thoroughness, that's what they would be doing. The rest would be cosmetic, paint tiles, et cetera. Okay, so I think that does it for the plans. If the plan is approved, as I said earlier, it is for eight tables of four people at each table on these two exterior decks. And it would be to serve our customers during the warmer months, perhaps the shoulder season, which has become particularly important during the pandemic. And I think, as I mentioned, it's a general restaurant strategy of my clients to be able to have a certain amount of outdoor seating, if at all possible.
What's the anticipated hours of operation?
Anticipated hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday, 10, 11 to 10 a.m. 11:00 in the morning, let me just make sure, 11 a.m. to, to 11 p.m. Sunday through Thursday. And Friday through Saturday, 11 a.m. to 12 p.m.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, that's what we requested and were granted at our first go-around with the town council. Interesting, they didn't mention anything about this agreement that you just told me about.
Yeah, so just, just for your information only, it just, so the town, a number of years ago, changed their form of government. They went from a three-member Board of Selectment and Town Meeting to a seven-member Town Council with a Town Manager. So those individuals who might have been on, you know, who are, who were on the last Board of Selectment are no longer on the Town Council. And there's been some turnover in the Town Council and that might explain some of the reason why they did not remember this. So just-
All right, thank you.
Not in the defense of anyone, but just to give you a little context, so.
Helpful. Okay. So, you know, I was asked by Bethany, I believe also yesterday, whether this would be an increase in the seating capacity of this restaurant. And we're not seeking a increase in the seating capacity. If we're, if, you know, the weather is good and we're seating people out on these decks, then obviously, you know, we have to take that into consideration in the inside space that we're, have as our dining rooms. If it's winter time and we're able to, you know, seat those 32 people inside, then obviously if we have the parking capacity, we would want to be able to do that. Okay, so the structure, as I mentioned, is a pre-existing non-conforming. And the one exterior change that I suggested that we would be making, which is that exterior staircase, does not, in my opinion, make this structure more non-conforming. The planning board has a rich history of special permits at this property, going back at least to 1989. That's, you know, my research and perhaps even further back. And I hope that this special permit is a logical extension of those, although now I'm privy to this agreement, which I was not aware of. The criteria that we need to review with the board, which we have put in writing, but I will quickly review them. The specific site, is it appropriate, is it an appropriate location for the use, structure, or condition? And again, the site has a long history as used as a restaurant. The outdoor decks have existed for years, albeit not being used for food and beverages. The second criteria, the use of developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. Outdoor dining at this location, we would submit, will not generate noise at a level that should disturb our neighbors or the neighborhood. Eight tables with a maximum of 32 people. The third criteria, there will be no nuisances such as noise or safety hazards created. The outdoor decks have been used for smoking, and the request is to extend that use to food and alcohol. And again, we don't anticipate a safety hazard. We're going to provide an emergency egress, and the noise will be the noise of 32 people dining. Adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. As I said, the interior will have only minor changes, an elimination of a bar and the addition of two walls to screen the kitchen and the dishwashing room. Otherwise, all the facilities are pretty much as exists. The next criteria is appropriate screening by walls, fences, plantings, or other devices shall be provided for the parking area. This is an existing parking area. We're not changing it, except for perhaps what we've discussed already with the two additional handicap parking spaces. The exterior features or appearance will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. The only exterior change is adding the exterior staircase from the deck to the parking lot for emergency egress and changing the existing sign to one that reflects the new business. Number and design of access, price, and traffic features shall be adequate for its intended use. Again, no changes are contemplated since the site has a long history of successful use as a restaurant banquet facility. And last, uses must be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws. Again, I would refer you to the long history of special permits and one variance that has been granted to the site by the town of East Long Meadow. And the use of the site as a restaurant banquet facility has been well-established as being consistent with your zoning bylaws. So, in conclusion, we would respectfully request that the planning board grant a special permit to allow the applicant to use the outdoor decks for service of food and alcoholic beverage. And not just, you know, during the pandemic, obviously. And allowing this restaurant, which has not been open for a while, to reopen as a vibrant Mexican restaurant, similar to the other restaurants owned and operated by these four individuals. I appreciate your patience. I'm happy to try to answer any questions you have.
So, questions from the board before we open the public hearing? Hearing none. I would request that we open the public hearing. And if there is anyone out there on Zoom who would like to be heard on this matter, you need to raise your hand, which is a thing you push at the bottom of the screen, and to be recognized, and you will be brought into the meeting where you can address the board. I see a Jay Curtis. So we are unable to hear you or see you at the moment.
Okay.
I'm, I can hear you.
Okay, I'm starting my video.
All right, great.
All right, my first name is Janice Curtis. I am a resident at 23 Van Dyke Road. I am very pleased to know that a new restaurant is coming in. I am very displeased the fact that it's going to be leased. The current owner is not a responsible businessperson in terms of the residents in the area. I can speak only for Van Dyke Road, but I also know that our neighbors on Granby, and I call them neighbors because we are a community, also have many concerns. I do want to go back to the plans with the parking. If the apartment is going to remain on that premises, they do take up two parking spaces. They'll be aware of that. So I think that also cuts into your spaces that you have. They have one car that stays there year-round, and then another one that comes and goes. Also, Barnum Street, if I'm not mistaken, isn't that where the smoke shop is?
I believe that's on the corner, yep.
Yes, okay, parking is going to be an issue. Considering that they have a liquor license, and they are open until 11 o'clock, and people are currently parking there on the side, on the street, and the restaurant, I think that's going to be a conflict with the parking. There's going to be a problem. Okay? And I don't know how, you know, whether they own the property or they don't own the property. I know that they're leasing, and there are some things that they weren't aware of. But already, there are issues with the parking. I know that the nail salon and hair place that abuts them right there, their hours are not, they shouldn't be in conflict, you know, they shouldn't have any problem. But during the day, those people do park there. So when you're saying Sunday through Thursday, and you're open at 11, I'm a little concerned about the parking, and people come in and out off of North Main Street. And then in terms of, is there an entertainment license that goes along with this?
So unfortunately, the entertainment license is done through the town council. It's not done through the planning board.
Oh, okay, so, all right, but is there, also, you don't know if there's one attached to the property or not?
So in the past, Hugara did have an entertainment license.
Right. Okay.
And I think Mr. Oppenheim did mention that, at least the mariachi band, at a minimum, so.
Okay, well, the mariachi band at a minimum is not a, is not a problem. I've been to Mexican restaurants where there are mariachi bands. And that's not anything that has to do with a lot of noise in the neighborhood. But, you know, the, it carries, the noise carries, and it comes straight over. I mean, there's a history of having to call the police, you know, because of the noise. And, you know, I, I looked into the property that these people own, and I do respect the fact that their family owned, and they seem to take good care with the property. I can only speak to the fact, and very upset, that they're not going to be the owners. And it's going to be a 10-year lease. And, you know, we have lived in this house for 40 years. And if you need to know everything that has gone on over there, we'd be happy to let you know, okay? And it's not just this new owner. But, you know, I am not opposed to any business being in there, but you have to be respectful of the fact that it is also residential. And now, we're going to have three places, you know, there's a liquor license on Barnum, there's a liquor now at the restaurant, which makes sense, and then City Line Liquor. So, you know, it's a little concerned about the way you want the neighborhood to go. And no, no offense to the people who are opening the restaurant, because from what I can see, and having researched your properties, and knowing people who live in the town where your property are, you are responsible people.
Great. Thank you. Is that it?
And my other thing is also in terms of, they were saying that, that there isn't anything else that has to do with the parking, the outside. Any landscaping, anything going to be done on Granby?
Mr. Oppenheim? Are you aware?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, to answer that question, nothing is planned. We need, we need the, obviously, as a result of this discussion, obviously, we need every parking space we can get. I appreciate Mrs. Curtis's comments and also her concerns. We are, we operate family restaurant, okay? I want to emphasize that. We're a Mexican family restaurant. The business that they've enjoyed has been built on that. Yes, there's a bar in there, but, you know, you, you will, it will not, it would not be unusual for the banquet room to be used by, you know, a soccer team for a team dinner or luncheon, you know, with their coaches, and, you know, parties for, you know, family-based parties. And I have been in these restaurants, most of them, not, not all of them, because I haven't been in the ones in New York, but.
Mr. Oppenheim, can I, can I interrupt you for one more? Can you, can you answer the specific question about whether you're going to do any landscaping around the parking?
Yeah, I thought I did. We have none planned.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, for dining purposes, if, you know, I know there shouldn't be any dining out there, and I know it's, they used it only for smoking, okay? So I have no idea which way the town is going to go with the dining, but it would be a better experience than looking out onto the auto shop. Just a heads up. It all depends upon who and what you want to attract, and how long you want to stay in business.
I can tell you, and you can look for yourself, Mrs. Curtis, at the way that these people decorate their restaurants.
Oh, I have, I have, okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that they won't decorate the decks, perhaps, you know, to be more inviting. And you could go and look at the restaurant that they opened last Friday on the web and see how, what the interior of that restaurant looks like as well.
I did, sir. I did, you're okay, you have to real, no, no, and I appreciate it. And I am not attacking the restaurant. What really threw me is the fact that they are not going to be the owners. And it's a 10-year lease. And I don't know, you know, we've had quite a bit of, there's a long history, okay? And, you know, right now, things have been pretty stable because the restaurant is closed.
Mrs. Curtis, is there any other specific issue you want to address?
No, sir, and thank you.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to appear. Appreciate it very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I just might add, for the benefit of Mrs. Curtis, who may now be gone, I don't know, but, you know, we are, we're, we would be operating under a commercial lease, which is a triple-ness lease, which requires us to maintain the building. So even though we are not the legal owners, we have a responsibility to the landlord to maintain it in a commercially reasonable way. And we will do that, especially because it would be our goal, you know, to acquire it.
You have an attractive location, you have an attractive, yeah. I'm asking if there are other people who are on the Zoom call who would like to be heard on this matter? Would you please raise your hand so you can be brought into the meeting? I'm the administrator. Do you see any other interested party?
There's one right now, he's coming in.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Greeley?
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Thanks for having me. I just wanted to jump in here quick and just mention my experience with the folks that are going to be operating the restaurant. I have, my, my relationship with them started probably about five years ago, looking for a restaurant in this area. Along the way, we tried unsuccessfully, unsuccessfully at securing some other locations. We tried specifically in East Long Meadow at another location. And at that time, about three years ago, they identified East Long Meadow as a community that they felt would be a perfect fit for their concept. They, you know, throughout the whole process, they have been wonderful people to deal with. I've enjoyed my experience with them. As a resident of East Long Meadow, I'm excited at the prospect of having another option for dining in the town, in a different, a different type of food that we don't have available at this time. So, you know, there's, there's been a lot of talk about the neighborhood, and I just, you know, want to be supportive of the folks that will be operating this restaurant, and that I really feel like they're going to be a contribution to the neighborhood, not a detriment in operating the restaurant, you know, with the intentions of being a part of the community for a long, long period of time, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Greeley.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to be heard? Please raise your hand so you can be brought in. I'll ask the administrator if there's anyone else they see.
Not seeing any hands.
So hearing none. What is the board's pleasure with respect to closing the public hearing and then bringing it back to the board for discussion and items that we believe the petitioner should be addressing?
I make a motion to close the public, public hearing and go back to discussion between us, amongst us.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
So motion's been made in second to close the public hearing, so by roll call. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Hi.
Mr. Torscha? Mr. Torscha? I think Frozen, Frozen in Zoom land? Jonathan, are you now? Mr. Kingston?
Hi.
And I am a yes as well, so it's enough to close the public hearing. So bring it back to the board. So if I have my thoughts in line, I do think a couple of things need to be resolved before this planning board could act on the issue. I think the first item is for Mr. Oppenheim to have an opportunity to review the, the agreement between the town and the Coelos that Bethany has forwarded to you. I might suggest that discussions with Bethany and the town manager might be in, in order. And if necessary, advice of town council on what, if anything, can be done with respect to that agreement, because the Coelos are the owners of the property. And I think that's, that may be the crux of, of the question in place. The second thing that I would like to see is maybe some plans drawn up that would limit the ability for the limit the, uh, ability for the neighbors to be able to view the, um, the decking and the ability to reduce any noise
Can you hear me now?
that might be afforded from, serviced on the decks as well. So for me, those are the two things that I would like addressed. Members of the board, are there other things that you would like to see, you know, addressed before we have the petitioner come back before us?
Mr. Chairman, before we continue, I would propose that we rescind our vote to close the public hearing. Because, uh, once we close it, we no longer take evidence. And we no longer take new information, and we're asking for new information.
Yeah, that's true.
And so I would move to rescind the vote to close the public hearing. And simply go into discussion so that we can continue the public hearing and take any new information that the applicant, uh, or anyone else chooses to submit.
I would second that.
Okay, so motion made in second to rescind the closing of the public hearing by roll call because we're on Zoom. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia? Mr. Kingston?
Yes.
And then, and then I will obviously go with that as well. So that's a yes. So thank you for that procedural correction, Mr. Kingston. So are, are there other items than what I have just indicated that members of the board would like the petitioners to address?
I, I think that, I think that's, there's a lot of items. The parking definitely seems to be a problem, particularly taking into account that you're gonna lose spaces for the apartment or the business that's gonna be rented to upstairs. I know the parking there's been a problem before. And quite frankly, this, this, the big stumbling block is the agreement with the, with the town council. We can't usurp that. And I'm open for suggestions as far as, um, you know, making a border between the outside dining and the, the adjoining, you know, properties. That's not a problem. And I would even go so far as to okay that, with an agreement existing between the town council and the owner. I have no way to, to see it, a positive determination here at this time.
I, I'd like to add, yeah, we would like to see the revised parking plan with the additional handicap spaces in it. That's a, a piece of evidence entered into the record. And, um, again, I'm, I'm still not convinced on the outdoor dining. Uh, I know the history of how those decks were constructed. Sort of without, at the time, without the proper approvals, and that was why we got into agreements. Approvals were given retroactively. So, and I'm also aware, I know this is a responsible group, but, um, the building inspector is not gonna be going in and counting seats every time they have outdoor seating, make sure that they've been removed from the inside. So it's not really an enforceable sort of thing. I have concerns about that, and I, I'd like to have the applicants give us a clearer picture of, of how that's gonna happen.
Mr. Richards?
My biggest concern is the existing agreement regarding the seating on the deck, and I'd like to have that resolved before we make a decision. In other words, the, the applicant's either gonna abide by it, or if there's gonna be a revised agreement, that should take place before we vote.
And I think the other thing, just, and, and you know, I, I think you heard from Mrs. Curtis that there's been, a number of issues associated with this, um, property. I have reviewed, uh, the petitioner's track record and history. It is outstanding. Congratulations, you run a very successful operation. And I think the towns that you're in have been really quite happy with, with you in the operations. When I mentioned the outdoor dining and the barriers, the visibility, you know, I, I early on asked about the hours of operation. To the best of my knowledge, we have two, uh, outside of pandemic-related, um, seating. I believe, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we have two restaurants in town that have outdoor seating. So they are Center Square Grill, and I believe De Nardos has outdoor seating as well. I'd be interested in knowing, maybe Bethany, you could do some homework if you could, what their service hours outside are. I think you had mentioned that on Friday and Saturday, service was going to be through midnight. I'd like to know what, um, so those two operations are. And yours is a little different because both of those properties, for all intents and purposes, are not surrounded by, or are not abutting any residential properties. So I, I think we might need to take that into consideration as well for any potential conditions if we approve the outdoor dining. So, um, I don't want to hog the conversation here or the questions, if there's other questions the board might have. Mr. Oppenheimer, do, do any of that sound, uh, too unwieldy for you to, to work with the town, get some answers with the town, and come back to us in, in Bethany? When's our next, uh, meeting?
Uh, it's currently scheduled for November 24th.
I see Mr. Torsia has his hand up. Are, are you unfrozen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, are you able to hear me?
I can, yep.
Great. I was just, just wanted a quick clarification, uh, in the police comments, they were talking about the expanding some of the sidewalk area, working with the DPW. So is that something that will be happening, uh, if in fact the, the project goes forward to kind of accommodate those safety concerns?
I think the, I, I think if you read further in the comments or, or didn't see it, uh, the police department said they would facilitate, uh, that work being done with the DPW. So it's gonna be town.
Just wanted to confirm.
Yeah, town improvements, not by the petitioner. But Mr. Oppenheimer, does that give you sufficient, if we were just, we could just schedule you back on the 24th? And if you have the answers, you know, to our concerns, great. If not, we could continue it as well. But I want to know, if you think that's sufficient time?
I certainly would like to, uh, understand from, when you say town council, are you saying town council with an SEL or CIL?
Uh, I'm actually probably both. So the agreement, the February 18th agreement needed to be approved by the town council IL. I know it was drafted by the town council EL. So it might need some coordination with both. I would believe that your primary contact person would be Bethany, who would probably get the town manager involved in it as well. I'm sure she will brief the town manager on, you know, some of the planning board questions. I don't know if the town manager is aware of the existing agreement or not. So.
Well, I'm, I'm very happy to work through Bethany to try to, you know, see, uh, the level of flexibility, you know, with both town council and the town council, CIL. I, I, I guess I would say to the board members, you know, on a very frank level, that, um, if this condition is one that will be imposed on this restaurant going forward, then I think that my clients are unlikely to avail themselves of this opportunity. I think that's how important they think it is, and frankly, that's how it was presented to us. So, um, you can imagine, uh, how I, uh, feel on behalf of my clients at this juncture. We have been working on this since October of 2019, pretty much steadily, except for a few months during the pandemic.
So. Concerning that the property owner did not disclose to you this agreement?
Yes, it is, it's very concerning. You know, uh, and, um, you know, it, it puts us behind, um, an eight ball that I don't really want to be behind. I mean, I don't, I don't want to be spending a lot of time trying to convince anyone in East Long Meadow of the merits of my client's operation. You know, we've been doing that. We, we got a liquor license last year. You know, none of this was, uh, an issue then. I must say candidly, none of it was.
So possibly then what could occur, Mr. Oppenheim, is the failure of Mr. Coelho to disclose this to you and the unfortunate circumstance that the town council didn't realize there was an agreement in place needs to be resolved. Town coun, town council may say, well, we gave him the, the liquor license, realizing what the intention of the petitioner was going to be. And they are the ones with the authority to make a change to that legal agreement. The, uh, unfortunately or fortunately, I'm also an attorney, and I have done a fair amount of land use law. So I, I know that there were a number of parties involved, number of boards and committees involved in the, in the agreement, planning board being one, town council being another, board of health being another. So I would imagine the town council, which is the elected board for the town, the planning board is not elected. The planning board is appointed, the board of health is appointed. So the town council would be the more appropriate, um, entity to go to for any type of correction for the agreement to be able to move forward. I, I can't hear you. Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Taking notes. I think we understand the board's concerns. Where we had, we by no means minimize any of your comments. We will try to address them, but I think, uh, you're absolutely correct. If, if this agreement, which I have not read, i- is going to stand, then it makes it very hard for us really to go forward. So in addition to being an attorney, I've been a mediator for over 20 years. So I will, you know, I will do my best to try to work something out that is acceptable to all the boards in, in, in your community, uh, within reason.
I, I think there is general excitement about this project. I think Mr. Greeley has stated it correctly. It would be a, a wonderful new opportunity. New choices in town, uh, creation of jobs when the property has been vacant for a period of time. So we welcome new business in town, so we, we hope this can move forward.
I would lo, I would love for you to keep a spot on your agenda, so I can possibly update you on the 24th of November.
Okay, um, I don't believe that the board needs to vote on, um, moving this item to the 24th. Mr. Kingston?
We need to vote to continue.
Okay.
I make a motion to continue to the 24th. Uh, at what time, Bethany? 6:15?
It'd probably be 6:00 PM as well.
Uh, make it 6:15.
Okay.
Because we gotta do minutes and stuff.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so by roll call.
Have a second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
So who seconded it?
Peter.
Thank you. Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So, uh, the next item of business is director's report. Bethany?
Uh, yes, um, I just wanted to make sure that we did recognize Rebecca Jones, who is the new administrative assistant in the planning office. This is her second week so far, and it's been going great on my end anyway. I'm very happy to have some help in the office. We are working on the 2021 meeting schedule this last couple of days. Um, and what Rebecca has prepared are two different schedules for 2021. One with the traditional, uh, meetings on Tuesdays, every first and third, uh, Tuesday of the month, and another one for every first and third Thursday of the month. The thought with moving the meetings to Thursdays is the hope to avoid, uh, meeting conflicts with town council, um, especially since it looks like we'll be staying on Zoom for quite a while. So we will hope to have those two by the next meeting to review. And depending on your schedules as a board, if you are able to move to Thursday, that may help us on the road.
Uh, Bethany, can I make a comment? PVPC meets on Thursdays. Uh, the executive committee meets at four o'clock to six o'clock, uh, once a month. And the general, uh, group meets four times a year, uh, starting around 5:30.
Okay, so that may be a conflict.
Could be a conflict for me. For instance, this, this week, uh, I have an executive committee meeting on Thursday, so.
George, are, are they a set Thursday?
Uh, they are. I think it's usually the third, but it, it moves a little bit because of the pandemic and also, depending on the business, because we have to approve most of the major expenditures, and if they, you know, something up against the law to kind of check, we have to have a meeting, that sort of thing.
So. Go ahead, Mr. Punderson.
I, I, I just want to say Thursdays in the summertime, I'm usually down towards the Rhode Island shore, and it's tough down there, so.
We know your internet is spotty.
Yeah, what's that?
Your internet is spotty down there.
It is spotty down there. I don't, I would have to work on something at my, uh, my place down there, but I'm not opposed to it. I just know that it's really tough down there.
Bethany, uh, upcoming items that we should be aware of for the next meeting?
We just have two, uh, site plan waivers, uh, for the November 24th meeting.
Okay.
So no public, many public hearings.
And can you maybe just give a quick overview of the master planning work that's going on?
Sure, so I just met with, um, Catherine F. A. and Ken Comier from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission this morning. They had drawn up a rough, um, or it wasn't a rough agenda, but basically, uh, the meetings for the steering committee, the agendas for the steering committee meetings for the next eight months. So if you would like, I will send that off to everybody as well, just to keep you all in the loop. One of their ideas is to have chapter captains. That's basically a designated, uh, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission staff member for each of the, uh, major chapters, um, who will be a contact person for anybody in East Long Meadow who would like to provide input, whether that's written or a one-on-one Zoom call or phone call. That's just another way to get the community involved. So I will most likely try to be connecting, um, at least one or two of the planning board members with those chapter captains, um, to help move the mess plan along.
Any other matters before the board? Do I have a motion?
I just want to thank George for straightening me out on that special permit closing. Been a bit away from the chair for a while.
It is wonderful, it is wonderful to have Mr. Kingston's guidance. All right, uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Punderson?
Aye.
Mr. Kingston?
Aye.
Mr. Torsia?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night.